Do we have any public, any court?
We do.
And I see some children over there. Would they like to come forward?
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak at the school board meeting tonight. As you know, we are sixth grade students nearing the end of our time at Lakeway.
We are looking forward to the next chapter in our lives as middle school students.
However, we will not forget all the fond memories we had at Lakeway. We would like to thank you for helping to provide us with the valuable educational experiences we have had so far and for the ones we know are yet to come. Next Tuesday night is our stepping up ceremony. We would be honored if you would attend this special occasion. Please accept our invitations and join us as we step up to become seventh graders. Thank you.
Thank you.
I say that's a perfectly well done.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And while we're at it, the school board received some thank you notes from the fifth and sixth grade for their Chromebooks. And I think that was great. There was lots of them. We passed that on.
Enjoying reading them. They were great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye kids.
She just get the princess way.
The other thing I'd like to mention is that boys' baseball is in the semifinals on Wednesday at seven. Meredith, where is it? Guilford? Okay. Laconia? Okay. Great. Any other public input? If not, do I hear approval of the minutes for May 16th? Do I hear a second? Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Business report, the manifest are going around. Tom, do you have a contract for us?
Fitzbo contract. Sent back down. We had made some changes to the language to update from future to second year and all those corrections that needed to be made for the new year. Sent it back down now. We're still needing their certification of disclosure of lobbying activities, certification not being disbarred, and all the other things. Certificate of independent price determination. And when we have those pieces in place, then we'll have signatures on there and submit it to the state.
Okay.
So that's, those are all boilerplate documents. Just require an appropriate signature on them.
Okay. And do you have anything on the audit report?
Actually, at 4:57, I received an email with the PDF in there for the final report, and the printed copy should be here by the end of the week.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Leslie had asked previously about the equipment at Fitzbo. One of the appendices in this year's contract was the fact that they were going to purchase some equipment for us. We have a revised appendix for next year, which shows the equipment that was purchased and the balance remaining. It looks as though Lakeway did get the pizza serving unit, grill slide and warming display, salad bar, smoothie, commercial blender, and some small wares. And the middle school, high school cafeteria got the flat top grill and equipment stand, quick gas disconnect, smoothie machine, blender, and some small wares. There's still $4,700 not yet expended that they will plan to spend next year, depending on where the need is. Not all this equipment has been put into service yet, but it is here. So depending on what has decided for actual needs, and there's still $4,700 set aside for us. And that will be part of the new agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Lakeway Assistant Principal search.
We continue to interview candidates. And so that's where we are.
I thought we were down to three or something at the last meeting.
We were down to three. And we have continued. I can discuss this probably in non-public.
Oh, okay.
But I think just to say that we are continuing to interview.
How far along are you in that process, David? As far as, are you initial interviews or do I go further along?
We were, we were further along. I can, I can fill you in better in non-public. Yes.
I've received a few inquiries from the public about it as well. So if we, you know, from people wondering what's happening with it, so.
Next on the agenda is emergency care first aid policy EBBC for the second reading. Do you hear a motion to adopt this policy? Any further questions on it?
Yes. I just, I just wondered if, it seemed like the purpose, what we were doing, this is we were adding in the language about opioid antagonists. And I didn't know if in the one, two, three, four, five, six, six paragraph where it says this authorization extends to administering epinephrine and/or opioid antagonist without prior notification of parents and guardians, I wonder if we should add that in to that, that specific language?
So to include the opioid antagonist there?
As well.
As well as the epinephrine?
That's what I'm wondering. I mean, I'm open to, I just wondered what.
I will check that. And I'll check with the nurses as well.
And I just had a question, David. I was curious, because I know we sort of, we talked about this before, but it says in this policy that we will ensure that there's one other person on staff aside from the school nurse who is current in first aid and CPR. And I just wondered, do you have any sense of how many staff members in our buildings are, you know, that we have beyond the nurse who are current in CPR and first aid?
No, I don't.
Okay, but there's at least one.
But there's at least one because the athletic trainer, or the athletic director has been trained, I'm aware. But beyond that, I don't know.
I'd be interested in what our current numbers are for that, just, you know, as you know, in terms of the academy, the academy building, Lakeway Elementary and the high school, middle school, so.
It is part of our safety plan. Those people are listed, and it has to be updated every year. So we'll be doing that at the end of June, so.
Okay, so it'll be in that information.
But there's quite a few. You'd be surprised how many are.
That's excellent.
All the coaches are, of course, coaches have to be. Is anybody who coaches are certified CPR and first aid?
Okay.
Thank you, Al.
That's what I was thinking, that they should be. So that will come back to us, I think, at the next meeting for final approval.
Yes.
And then, statement of regulation, emergency medication guidelines as a second reading?
Yes.
This was sent to our lawyer.
Yes.
In fact, both of these were. And the second reading for this has been put into whatever she had said was correct.
I'll make a mo, should I make a motion to?
Yeah.
I've got a, I've, I noticed a couple of things, and I think we got to change on it. So I guess I'm not.
So make a motion to?
Review it, or?
To?
Include them in the, in the next draft.
Okay.
Okay, so my understanding is we're not going to approve this tonight, that you have some possible changes.
Unless you disagree, and then we could approve it, I guess, so.
Well, this is just the second reading, so it's still in draft form.
Okay.
And so it can be.
Do we need a motion even?
Well, I think we should have a motion.
Accept it.
Motion to adopt it and second it with any corrections, and we amend it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt policy EBBC-R, emergency care and first aid, emergency medications and guidelines.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any additions, corrections that you would like to see changed or?
Yep. And under purpose, second paragraph, we need a comma in between epinephrine and naloxone? How do you pronounce that?
Yep.
Naloxone? I believe we need a comma there.
Yep.
Under guidelines, third paragraph, last word, plan, we need an S added to that, should be plural.
Oh, okay.
And under records, second paragraph, it looks like we're capitalizing Narcan, so I would be consistent throughout the document, and I would capitalize Narcan. And then, my big question about this is, it says, "or other properly trained staff" under guidelines, so people who may administer epinephrine. And I just wanted to understand and make sure we're clear in our policy, what we mean by that, "other properly trained staff." So that it's, I just want to understand what the thought is when this was brought through, what that meant. Because I think the police officers have to be EMS trained.
So which paragraph are you looking at?
First paragraph under guidelines.
Yeah.
The school nurse or other properly trained staff? I just wonder what that meant.
Well, we could call it certified trained staff.
Is there a certification program for you in Narcan?
There is a training. There is not a certificate that has been issued.
So maybe we could word it somehow to say that they've gone through Narcan administration training?
Well, the attorney in their letter that they wrote to us when they went over this, they cited a couple of things. They cited that the executive director of the New Hampshire Board of Nursing has recommended training for anyone administering Narcan should include CPR, automated external defibrillators, and first aid training. And then the Department of Safety in New Hampshire requires law enforcement officers to complete the state's training program for the safe and effective use of Narcan, a CPR program that meets or exceeds the American Heart Association guidelines, as well as first aid. So basically, I think they have to be, you know, pretty thoroughly trained. So I just was wondering what, if we need to clarify kind of what training means in our district.
For the Narcan, I participated in the regional drug abuse prevention workshop and symposium sponsored regionally. It was a training that was conducted by officials from the Public Health Department. They then distributed the kits. The training was very short, because they explained to us that the risk to the potential victim and the risk to the person administering it was very low, and that it did not require a high level of training. I do understand that the Nurses Association and the first responders in the Police Department have different standards.
David, do you know if the kits that they gave out, were they for Narcan injection or Narcan nasal?
Nasal.
Nasal. So they, so there's, must be descriptions and instructions on how to use the nasal cannula, whether it comes with this?
There are.
Okay.
I think that what we could do, in the third, one to third paragraph of the policy, it says, "The superintendent will ensure that at least one other person on staff aside from the school nurse has current first aid and CPR certification." We may want to include the safe and effective use of Narcan. To me, that would cover everything, policy and procedure.
Good idea.
What were your words, "and the safe"?
I would say, "who has current first aid CPR certification." Well, it says, "is administered, authorized to administer first aid and CPR as needed." For Nar, I don't know, for Narcan use, they should also have the safe and effective use of Narcan training program, or a training program on the safe and effective use.
Okay, I will make a note of that.
So for the administration of Narcan, naloxone, personnel need to have the above as well as the safe and effective use of Narcan.
Okay.
And this, this policy is talking about students, is the way I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Is that the board's, is that the way others are reading it? Because it, it's referring specifically to students throughout the policy and the regulations.
Right. That's how I read it.
That's a question I had. If someone came into the school who was not a student?
Right.
And had an episode, and needed Narcan administration, would this policy cover anyone on school grounds or just students?
I would hope that it would cover anyone.
What's our response time for emergency services typically? I mean, do we have an idea how long it takes them to get to the high school in Lakeway and whatnot?
Three to four minutes.
Pretty quick. Okay. So that's, that's good.
But also, the window of opportunity between an overdose and the administration of the opioid antagonist is shorter than that. I've had it described as needing, really seconds if possible.
Seconds.
Seconds.
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
I mean, that's the purpose of having the kits on site and having people trained in their administration.
So, but we're talking about having the kits locked up in the nurse's office.
And it should be.
So that's what our, that's what this says.
The nurse's office?
That's what I read. I don't know, did you, that's what I read.
I just, I think that they need to be available in the hands of trained personnel. I would say you're, people who are normally in attendance at public functions, that it is kept in a secure location, but that it can be accessible. Now, that's, that's the difference here. And because it is administered nasally, it means that you don't run the risk of what an injection would entail. The training stressed the fact that if you were to administer this to a person who was not in crisis, that there would not be a negative effect. So that the risk of misadministering and that sort of thing is, is very reduced. And I just, I would advocate that we train people in its use, that we let people know in the school who has access to it, that it's kept in a secure location in the school, perhaps several secure locations. And that it's available in an emergency.
So should we put wording in there for anyone on school grounds or on school functions that is available? Like we had a basketball game or a school function here, and we had an episode, that this treatment should be available to anyone on school grounds or in a school function? Because like Leslie said, most of this just really says students.
Yeah.
Well, we may want to run it by the attorney again with that new language to just make sure that our, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying, David, that the risk is, is very, very low, you know? And I did go read the, you know, the drug manufacturer's information about it. But, but we, we just, you know, we have to watch the liability of the district too, so.
Are the AEDs available to anyone in schools?
They're located in appropriate places.
They're located in public. And are they locked, or are they?
No, I don't believe they're locked. You can open them up and then follow the directions.
And so maybe there could be a protocol similar to the AEDs?
David, I just have two things that I at least recommend. I'd probably recommend staying away from the use of the word Narcan. Stick to naloxone. Narcan is a brand name.
Okay.
Most of what people are going to see out in the streets, or on ambulances and the doctor's offices or in any of these facilities will carry it, it'll be naloxone. That way, it doesn't cause confusion. And then the other thing that I'm going to recommend is that the storage requirements for it, that it be under double lock, two locks. Can be a locked room for one, and a locked cabinet for two. Every medication stored at the hospital is under double lock. It may mean a secured department, which is locked number one, and then in a cabinet or in a machine, number two. But every medication at the hospital is under two locks.
So, develop wording, that it's available to anyone on school grounds, to use the term naloxone to describe it, and that we provide for double locked.
Right. I mean, if it's in the nurse's room that's locked up, and then she has a cabinet or a small thing in there?
Correct. Can be a lock box.
Can be a lock box. That's a double lock and key. And then, you know, if she's not at some of these functions, the other certified personnel may have.
Well, that's the thing. We have to make sure that under these double locks, that it doesn't take too much to get to what we need here.
It doesn't. Been there, done that.
What's that?
I've been there, done that.
What's that?
Double lock and key.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, well, in a public facility, who, we just got to make sure somebody's available that can get through those double locks and keys.
Well, I think once you know who the certified personnel are that are going to be attending the games or events.
So you would have to know that.
Well, you can, we can test it. We can sort of get it set up and see how long it takes, and see if it's a reasonable time period, right?
Certainly would be reasonable to do some drills.
Just to see, okay, is this, is this reasonable, will, can we get it out in adequate time, you know, to make a difference?
The other thing to also realize is a lot of the functions that we do have, such as games, whatnot, there's a police officer here who is more than likely either carrying naloxone with him, or it's on his car. So there's others, there's another source.
Right.
Other than just relying on access to the schools.
And did we decide that we were keeping it in one location? Are there more than one kit? I don't know much.
Well, I don't know yet.
Yeah.
The kits, the kits can be readily available. They're relatively expensive.
This is a big school, so if we had one.
One Lakeway.
Lakeway and.
So, I mean, I'm not sure that, I know it's a younger student population, I'm not sure what, but that was among the, would there be, you think it would be at all the buildings?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
I was thinking floors.
Because this is, the reality for me is not as much that a student would have an episode as perhaps a member of the public would have an episode. And that those, that having it available in that event would be important to us. So I will look into drafting those changes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the policy JKAA, use of child restraints and seclusion for revised first reading.
This policy is required by statute, and somehow we have missed getting it before the board. So when we realized that, then we submitted to the board for its review tonight and for adoption going forward.
And it looked like the difference was you, it's including seclusion now?
Yes.
I compared it to the original policy.
Yes.
It was just on restraints, and now it's including seclusion?
That's correct.
Okay. David, I had a question about the statement of policy in the first sentence. It says, "Littleton School District hereby authorizes school officials to use restraint to ensure the immediate physical safety of persons, et cetera." What does that mean, "school officials"?
That would be a trained individual.
Employees of the district?
Employees of the district.
So does that mean it could be anywhere from a para to an administrator?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's what the recommended language is?
Yes.
Say, "school officials"?
Yes. Could it be, you know, an administrator or designee? But the, the important part is that the person have basic safety training.
So maybe we should say, "trained school," especially "trained school officials." It just says "school," I mean, I don't know.
Or just "trained."
Yeah, because it is every employee, an official.
Yep. So if you add the word "trained."
Just "trained."
Okay. Let's add "trained."
That reading exists now, so it would be nothing there.
Need a motion?
Yep.
I move the, that's the policy, JKAA.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any further corrections or? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the procedure is JKAR, kind of lengthy. Which provides a lot of definitions of what kind of restraints.
What are mechanical devices? I have to ask.
What?
Mechanical devices.
Clothing. Clothing it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept this, to come back for a second review?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a couple of corrections too.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to.
If you give them to me, and then I'll just have them incorporated.
Okay. I also have a question. So if you go to page four, under section four, number three, where it's talking about restraints and length of restraints, I guess, and it's talking about the principal or supervisor or employee designated by the principal to provide such approval as required. But, so does the principal, I'm assuming, delegates that out to people? Or how does that work, David? If a child does need to be restrained, and how does that?
If the, if the child does need restraint, there, typically, we have a response team, and there is a team leader, and they would notify the principal that a restraint is in progress.
Okay.
And so either the principal or the designee would go to the site and be there while the restraint is in progress.
Okay. Okay. And I know we have, or I believe we have a seclusion room at Lakeway. Is that correct or not?
I don't, I don't believe we have a seclusion room.
No, we don't have a, okay. So do we, because it says there's room conditions for a seclusion area are listed on page five and detailed out. And I just wondered if we have such rooms available, um, if they're needed.
Let me check on that to be sure, Leslie. Because I know we had a discussion of whether we were going to have a room that was indeed designated as a seclusion room.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems to me our discussion was moving away from that.
Yeah.
But let me double check.
Okay. Well, I just, I, it just looks like there's pretty clear guidelines of what we need to have if we're going to do that. And so I just wondered if we were, if we, if, I guess, are we, do we secluded? In your reports that you get, is seclusion happening ever?
I don't recall that I have seen any report since I've been here that, that outlined seclusion.
That happening, okay. Because it looks like you have to get copied on everything.
Yes, and I, I, I do not recall having gotten any report of seclusion.
So it's not happening a lot, which is, or perhaps at all, which is great news.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Recommendations for summer projects, this honor committee report?
Yes. And Tom and, um, Al and I have been working on recommendations for summer projects. And it has been something of a work influx. The, you have before you a spreadsheet and I'll walk you through that and ask Tom and Al to, um, join in at any time. And Al really took the lead on the train service agreements. This is more to inform the board of what we have, um, what we have researched and a recommendation that we're making for a review of the mechanicals and controls at the middle school, high school tech center. And Al, would you describe what you discovered when you, um, looked into this?
Well, we have units that were installed as, they go back as far as 2003 and those units have been serviced, but, um, train is, is the make of the equipment. So they have all the software to fully, um, just two pieces. One is the mechanicals, uh, how, how the belts are working and, and the motors, et cetera, on all the roof units. And the other section is the controls. So we've been having difficulty, uh, with heating and cooling over the years. So when we have, have them serviced, we service primarily mechanicals, uh, make sure the filters are changed, the belts, et cetera. But we really can't get into the software. So since we haven't had, and one of the reasons why we haven't is usually a contract service to a train is quite expensive. And initially they, they offered a contract to us, which we had serviced twice a year. So you see, it's quite expensive. So we scaled it back a little bit since we haven't had them on site, uh, performing service contract work since around 2003. But it still hasn't been done, but the company, they can get in. So anyways, this, this money, uh, the money is in this year's budget to be able to move forward, um, with this project. So I just, this is really to inform you that we are going to, we'd like to go under contract with them, uh, to look at our mechanicals and, and then our controls, to have everything aligned for next heating season and cooling season. We have had them on site. Um, if there's a real issue with, a couple of years ago, we had some issues with our heat. Uh, if you remember, we had an early dismissal. Uh, we, we, they did respond, even though, you know, we don't have a contract and there, there was, they're able to fix it on another process. So, you know, do we need to do this every year? Um, I'm not sure at this stage, but I think it's, it's long overdue to have them up here and take a look at our, our system and balance everything once again.
And we did discuss this as a group at the facilities committee. I think it was a meeting when you weren't there, David, but, and I feel like the members were in support of it.
I missed that last meeting.
Yeah, but it was even before that. We talked about it. But I mean, I think it's, it's necessary. It hasn't been done in so long, so.
Did they give you an idea of what, um, forward from this point, what a service contract would be for mechanicals and controls?
That would be, uh, what you see there, uh, would be for a yearly.
That would be for a year?
Yeah. It's expensive.
Wow.
Well, part of our, um, and I don't remember the numbers, but our facilities meeting, Henry Watt sits on our facilities committee and also a large, um, operation with the hospital. They spend significant amount of money on, on service contracts and maintain it. It costs a lot of money to maintain, uh, all of your mechanicals and controls. I forget the number, but he quoted us a number that was kind of significant.
And like you said, the original contract that they sent us, I have a copy of it, was for more. And so they kind of.
Rescued.
Massaged it and worked it into a little different situation, so.
I'll give you an example of our controls. Typically, the hall by the library is quite hot, so our complaint and custodial, he'd go down and look on, because everything's computerized. You look on our computer thermostats and say, well, it's, it's 68 degrees, that's what, that's what it's set for, but it's not. Uh, so all those imbalances are throughout the school.
And that's in the operations budget, budget of this year that hasn't been expended yet, so that's.
So this is, this is basically to inform you.
Yeah.
Of what's going on. But it's also part, Al has been working all year in gathering these disparate pieces together. We've assembled them here for your review. Tom is going to tell us about what funds, undesignated funds are available. We'll talk about that when we get to, but we just put it all together.
So maybe the two other items I've heard about before would be number, number two, the renovations of the bathrooms, which are up here. Um, and we estimated a cost of around $34,000. Uh, it's come in a little higher because we wanted to put some drainage systems in those bathrooms. Um, and then we had talked about using capital reserve funds for those, but we never, the board never officially voted on that, but we have been talking about that. And the other item we talked about was the playground, uh, enlarging the perimeter of, of the playground, the upper playground. We had a recommendation from our insurance company to do so. And we talked about using capital reserve money for that. Again, we didn't vote on that. Primarily that $23,000, 98% of that is for the, uh, the filth.
Rubber chips.
The rubber chips.
Oh, okay.
Because we're actually building the frame here on site and then moving up to Lakeway in the fall. So those are two items we've, we have discussed before.
Well, and the, the roof replacement, the multi-purpose room, roof replacement at Lakeway, we've talked about that.
Yeah, we have.
That's the third grade, that was the third grade one that will be postponed. We're doing a multi-purpose roof this summer. There were two roofs at Lakeway that we discussed.
Right, the multi-purpose room was the one that was leaking.
Right, and that's, that's being fixed this summer.
Yep.
So that's not on here?
That's not on here because it's already.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So this is, it's a mixture of summer, okay, I got you.
So this is the third grade roof that we.
Okay.
Postponed.
Postponed to next budget cycle, but it's.
We went by direct need.
Yeah, still.
But we.
It's not leaking, but it's one of, it's an oldest, maybe, maybe the oldest roof down there. And so at any moment.
Yeah.
You could have a catastrophe.
So, Al, just so I'm clear, this is the third grade room that's on here?
The third grade roof? Yes.
Okay, but the money for the, the money for the multi-purpose room hasn't been officially appropriated yet for that, has it? I mean, that has to be considered, doesn't it? The, it's out for bid right now.
At the USCR, you approved that.
That one we did, yeah.
Tom.
Okay, all right.
Have we?
Remember that?
Let's clear this up, because I'm, I was under the impression that under number five, the roof replacement was the multi-purpose room. Am I wrong?
I believe that's in the operating budget.
It's in the operating budget.
As, as of July 1, as of July.
Okay, July.
We're doing a lot of work prior to, um, because we wanted to add that the structures are so old that at the same time you want to add a little bit of insulation, you have to have a structural analysis because you're going to have more snow potentially.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm getting mixed up.
We're doing all that work leading up, leading up to that.
Thank you. I.
There's been so much discussion about these.
There has.
Yes.
So that's in the budget?
Yes.
So like, for the upcoming budget, like the train that's listed on here, I guess that's what I'm getting, the train is in the budget, the current budget.
Train's in the current budget.
And the multi-purpose room is in the budget.
July 1.
Next one. Got it. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're getting all these.
But we did talk about both roofs extensively.
Yeah.
Right.
Building the budget.
Yes, we did. Oh, yeah. No, we definitely did. Yeah.
Thank you. So then, as, if we just go right down, number three is a topic that we have discussed from time to time. And it is the replacement of the gym roof, the ceiling, the lights, and moving the sprinklers.
The roof? Uh, you, you meaning just the ceiling or the roof?
The roof replacement.
Roof.
Yep.
Not the ceiling roof, the ceiling and then the roof and the lights, three things?
Yep. And then the, move the sprinklers, which would be part of the work up there. And the estimate for that is $130,436. And we were looking at undesignated funds or cap, and capital reserve mixed. And when we, um, developed this a week ago, it looked like we would take $88,000 from the undesignated funds and 42 from the capital reserve. Um, Tom informed me this afternoon that those funds, um, have been revised. We'll, we'll talk about that in a minute. Excuse me. Then we, um, discussed the need for security cameras and we came up with, um, a proposal for eight at the Littleton Academy, 24 at Lakeway, 37 at the high school, four at the SAU, and eight at the CTC. And servers to monitor those and a, an estimated cost of $40,530. And this was in response to, um, need that is most acute at Lakeway, but also throughout the other buildings, because moving to Alice Response and CopSync, having the opportunity to, um, see what's happening in the building and to inform people about what's going on in the buildings is very important and that is done electronically. So the, the recommendation for these, um, cameras come out of the, the need for the safety monitoring. I don't know, do they have any questions on that?
Do we need to solicit input as to what the best and useful place is for those cameras or?
Administration and, and custodial services work together. We have been, we have been, and we've done this also with the police department, right?
Did they have input?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I believe they did.
Yeah, okay.
Now, these new cameras, are they modular to the systems we already have, so just adding on or is it going to replace?
Some of.
We're, we're increasing the background. Right now, we're getting, uh, the, the small amount of cameras that have at Lakeway come up here through our system.
Right.
Back to Lakeway, if you imagine, to, to monitor or someone's cell phone. Um, and we have been working with the police. The police have access to all our cameras online, so if there's an issue here and they get a call.
Yeah, that's good.
They could, they could automatically, uh, review our, our cameras and see if there's a problem in the area.
So it'll be integrated, complete, all the cameras will be integrated and correct.
That is good.
And finally, looking at Lakeway for number five, um, is a proposal to add air conditioning to the kindergarten wing, air conditioning to the multi-purpose room, and to construct, um, uh, office walls and to reinforce windows in the office reception area. And then the recommended sources were just looking at what we thought would be the, um, unassigned fund balances at the end of the year. And Tom revised those again today. And Tom, if you want to, or do I have the crib sheet? Okay. So we were anticipating an unincumbered fund balance of $534,000. And against that, anticipating arbitrary expenses, Tom, how do you?
We have some additional expenses that aren't included yet.
Okay.
They haven't been encumbered. We don't want to spend some money.
So then we anticipate, um, $100,000 going to food service.
Between 75 and 100 for food service, yes.
And a drop in revenue. So that would be a negative $50,000. So at this point, we are looking at an anticipated $350,000, which is considerably less than what we were talking about when we put together the summer project list.
And does that take into account the 80,000, I think it was, voters approved on warrant articles to go to capital reserves? Is that, or would that come out of the 350?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know, you know what I mean. I think we, we voted 50 and 30 to two different accounts. So then.
So that would leave about 270. And so I think that the proposal that we have in front of you would require us to, um, make some changes, make, make some recommendations. And it depends upon what the board would like to allocate for a return at the end of the fiscal year.
Can I get the balances for the capital reserve funds? Just so we have that as we're, you know, just so we know how much off it, I knew them recently, but I didn't bring them with me. You got them, yeah?
Twelve thirty-one.
1231 and 58,000.
Or maybe you can, I bet.
It's at the end of April.
End of April, so.
Haven't done the May reports yet.
58,000.
Okay. So facilities maintenance has 181, and it basically, 181,000. And equipment has 102. Huh?
Okay.
But then we're going to add in, what, I'm trying to remember, was it 50 for, I'm trying to remember which, how the warrant was split.
50 for.
I know, but which was which, 50 for?
Maintenance.
Maintenance?
30 for equipment.
Okay, so. So then we're going to be up to 230 in maintenance, right? And then 30 in equipment, add 30, so 132 for equipment. Once we've got that allocated.
Eight, 22, 32. Would it not make sense to take what you've designated here to come out of undesignated funds? Just take those actual figures that you've proposed? And if I do that, I come up with 158,089. Just what you proposed there, come out of.
What's that?
Undesignated funds. I scratch my mouth.
For the, for the cameras, David, the security cameras?
Yes.
Is there no money in the budget, or is this, is this additional money you need on top of what was budgeted already? And for the 16, 17 budget? Because we have some money for security cameras, right?
We do have some money.
So is this the overall total we need, or is this what we need in addition to what's budgeted?
This is the overall total.
Okay, so what do we budget for that about?
I think it's 10 at Lakeway and.
So we might, we should, we've approved that, that budget's been approved by the voters for that amount, so we'd want to.
So how much was that, did you say? 18,000? So that's 22,530.
Okay, so that knocks that down a little bit.
We're in the process of looking at different vendors as well, to see what is the cheapest cost. And there is money budgeted, some money is for these, the security office walls, that's the main entrance of Lakeway. So we have some money's budgeted for that too.
Oh.
How much did you say on each year? July 1.
For July 1. So there's eight less from the 12,4.
Say that, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about something else, I'm still thinking about that multipurpose room.
So the 12,409 here, reduce that by 8,000.
But where are we taking that?
Security office walls and windows.
So wouldn't it be?
Okay.
Wouldn't it be helpful to have a final after we find out what's been budgeted and what hasn't?
We can do that.
I mean, it was still, it would clear it up for me.
Yeah, because that would help us subtract out, but.
We can do that.
And also this week, we're doing final payrolls.
So there's 8,000.
There's a lot of things like sick pay distribution, which is still an undetermined number. I guess there's been an awful lot of absences lately too, so some of those numbers are coming down.
Those are the only two items that we didn't budget, all the other items?
Are as is?
You got up and stayed here.
I don't have the Pittsburgh invoice.
So there's only two items in, partially in the budget?
Yes.
The main entrance?
Main entrance and the.
Cameras.
Even though we talked about the other items?
Yes, we did.
We'd have to take it out, that's why we're adding money back in.
Right. So I just, can you double check that the multipurpose room roof? My recollection of the budget was that we were going to take that from capital reserve funds, and so can you, that, because that's $54,000, okay? And so we're going to do that job, and I don't, I think we, remember we changed some stuff towards the end.
I understood, I wrote it down when I was taking notes 100 years ago. The multipurpose roof, 54,000, and two public bathrooms.
Will it be capital reserve, right?
Will be, we're being taken out of maintenance capital reserve.
So you've got to factor that into this list, okay? Because if this, if this roof is the roof replacement for the third grade room, or you got to go back and check it, but that's, that's really what I remember, and I may be dead wrong, but I'm not, I don't want to, if other people, I just talked to Greg, and he kind of remembers that too, and I just don't want to have these figures be off by 54,000.
Yeah, we'll go back and check it.
I think I'd like to have you go back and just kind of clear it up.
We can do that, well, this was, this was our first attempt to pull it all together, to put it on a single document that, but we can do that.
No, we still have a June 30 deadline on.
We have to have it before then.
Yes, I recommend that we have it.
I would like to have another meeting next week, just for this.
Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
Now, this is good, brings it back to the surface again, David.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, and obviously we're going to come back, but my, I just pulled another document, fire your client, that we had looked at a facilities committee. So you're indeed correct, the capital reserve, we looked at the Lakeway multipurpose roof for $54,000, $23,000 for the playroom.
Right.
And $32,000 for the public bathroom.
All right, and that's how we got, that's how we got lower for the budget committee, okay? So that's, we sort of did do it towards the end, but we've got to factor, we're definitely doing that multipurpose room roof, so we have to factor that into this. Yeah, so I just have one more question about this, for Lakeway. You've got air conditioning units on here, and I'm just wondering about during the facilities discussions, was we were making the budget, we went round and round about how many unit ventilators to get, and I don't, and I'm, so you're prioritizing this air conditioning above the unit ventilators, the heat?
That was our discussion at our last meeting.
So, just to be clear, the, because the quote for the multipurpose room does include room 204, which I think is our little room.
Title one, yeah.
And the quote is, as of May 25th, $51,250.
What's the quote for the multipurpose?
$51,250. And the unit ventilator quote from June 2nd, from Roman Habits, is $43,000. We talked about replacing.
For one unit ventilator?
Three.
Assuming that's one of the four, we talked about.
I thought there were 17,000.
When we budgeted it, we talked about $16,000 per.
Right.
So, this has to be for, and I think there's, there's an error in this quote, because he refers to the plural. In the first sentence, he refers to it as singular, and it can't be $43,000 for one.
I don't think so.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, it seems to me we discussed three.
That, that's what my.
So I didn't, it doesn't have the number on this quote, I just received on Friday, but I can double check.
Do we ask for other quotes?
Usually do.
Yeah.
I just wondered about, so you, David.
This is what I got here, three units, one for you, it's working fine.
No, I know, we've talked about this a lot at the facilities, but I, I just want, we talked a lot about Greg Yorn at the meeting, but we could talk about this a little bit. So I just, so the administration met, and you guys decided to go for air conditioning over the heat. I'm just trying to understand the thinking here, so I know what your, what your plan is.
We were, we were, yes.
Okay.
On the basis of the information that we got from the principal and from the head custodian, was that the unit ventilators, although they may need replacing, they may not. And the need for air conditioning, or the desire for air conditioning, the multipurpose room would extend the usefulness or the comfort in the warm weather. And at the same time, we talked about the fact that the new picnic tables, in fair weather, at this time of year and in the fall, do provide for some of the relief. So that, air conditioning, as we were talking, that became one of the more elastic line items. In other words, we would have some wiggle room there.
Well, that's what I walked away from the meeting, so I was, I was surprised to see it on here. So I just, I just was trying to figure out what, what had happened since that meeting. That's what I was just asking, because I thought, okay, maybe you went back to them, and they said, yes, we want the air conditioning, that's.
Yes, and then the last conversation we had was, well, maybe not. So, I mean, what we're trying to move this down to is something concrete. And, you know, if, if, I'm looking at this list, for me, the air conditioning in multipurpose room would be the least, oh, what's the word that I want? The least important, but at least, I mean, our goal was to begin to get a single accounting, a single representation of our major projects, and then make decisions which is the more important.
So we're going to need another meeting, you think, Ann?
Well, if, if everybody wants to know, you know, where we're really at, and how much the figures are going to cost us, because we look like a number four, that we've already approved some money, so the balance is only going to be 22,530. And under the security, number five, which is 12,000, it looks like we've already put in 8,000. So we'll only need like, say, 4,500. So I'd rather have more appropriate figures, and. And where they're coming out of, so we can approve these projects, because we do need the vendors with them. And I think the best thing to do personally is to have a meeting just on this alone next week.
Okay.
And we can't wait till.
No.
The end. Sorry, folks. Okay? Everybody in agreement? I see nods, okay.
And we'll get the multipurpose room roof on there.
Yeah.
So, and. Yeah.
What's happening with the day meeting?
I don't think we officially.
Which next week are you, 13th or 14th?
I'm thinking, no, we do, that's when we get the.
This week?
The week of the 13th, I think.
Week of the 13th?
This week is pretty busy with night events.
Yes, it is, so as I said, you'd have to have it during the day, maybe a lunch meeting or something.
Part of this discussion is almost having an initial discussion about next year's budget.
Well.
Looking at, you know, what projects do we want to put off maybe next year, do we want to fund in a different way?
Well, I think, oh, it'll be a good talk.
It'll be a good talk.
When do we want to meet?
Is it true the athletic awards at the 13th?
Yes.
After school?
What?
They are at 6:30.
Okay.
That's, that's Monday, Tuesday stepping up.
Tuesday the, I don't know.
14th.
I'll open my.
6:30 stepping up. So Monday and Tuesday are at 6:00.
I didn't bring my calendar, so I'm going to have to rely on you guys, so.
Well, I just.
Well, I didn't have Monday on the agenda.
Because graduation, graduation's the 11th, and they have an, and they have an athletic awards after that?
What's Wednesday night, the 15th?
About the 15th, folks.
What?
Want to celebrate and.
Yeah.
You want to do, you want to do a lunch?
So I have one, two, three, I have only one.
I'm good with that, I'm okay. Can you do a lunch gym?
On the 15th?
Well, or maybe even sooner, right? It'd be good, you wouldn't have to push it out that far.
I wouldn't be able to do Monday.
I'm not here on the 15th.
Oh.
You want more?
We're going to need.
That would be, that's the last day of school.
Oh, yes, that's not a good day to have you guys.
Probably don't do the lunch that day.
What day is that, Tuesday?
What day's the last day of school?
I think it's the 15th.
So is Tuesday work?
14th, Tuesday, I think, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my calendar, I didn't realize.
Tuesday's the night of stepping up, but if we were to do a lunch meeting, have to come up to the hospital.
We could do it during the day, that would be helpful.
If we have, and maybe we can.
I could do it at lunch.
Can you do a luncheon, the 14th, David?
I have, I may have to change an appointment, but if I can change the appointment, the answer's yes.
Okay, Al? Tom?
What do we, 2B?
So what time would you get, instead of 12, 12:30, what's best?
I'm flexible, you guys.
11:30.
On the 14th, do we still have the 14th?
Yes.
Why don't we do it at noon?
Okay.
So June 14th at New facilities discussion.
And where is this meeting?
At Littleton Hospital, in some room that.
In some room Greg designated.
In some room that Greg will figure it out.
Email myself right now.
You better. Well, I might buy a lunch.
Yeah. Look at the company to buy a lunch.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything on the Lakeway site exploration committee, Jim?
Yeah, we had our first meeting weeks back, shared our task with the group that was there. And one of the committee members' tasks was to locate properties in and around a two mile radius of the high school. That fits parameters, 12 different parameters, based on some of the information the school board gave informing the committee. And I have a spreadsheet that's been started with some scoring, and there's ranking on it from properties that meet or exceed in parameters, could meet parameters with some site development, or does not meet site parameter, so we're rating these different, we found 20 properties that we don't know right now if they are for sale, if they would be for sale. But right now, we're just ranking them and then scoring them. And that score will be an indicator whether or not we want to pursue those properties. Some are available that we know of, others I have no idea. I'd have to go early to see where these are. But I will forward a copy of the spreadsheet to everybody, because you may know more about these properties, you know, and you may be able to wait and score them. But our goal is to have a spreadsheet, and then bring it to the board, and have the board begin the process of just eliminating or pursuing. So we're in the process right now.
Okay.
That's great, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, more properties than I thought. The first parameter was five acres plus, and the second was within two miles of the high school. So I was surprised there was that many, make room for us.
Think we're going to need more than five acres.
Five acres plus, so we can start crossing off the list if it's less.
Okay, all right. Superintendent's report?
I'm busy with personnel, and, and working on the search for the assistant principal, and attending some ceremonies. That's it in a nutshell, but personnel has taken a great deal of time and attention.
Okay. Thank you. There's nothing else before the public meeting, can I have a motion to go into non-public, please? Under what, under 2 and 3?
I don't know what I do have.
We have it online, too.
I got it right here. So I'll make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph 2, section 3 of the RSA 91A, colon, 3 of the right to no law for number 2, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and number 3, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the school board, taking with us the superintendent.
And business manager?
And business manager.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Cook.
Robbins.
Wiggitt.
Nelson.
Anan.
Okay, we're in.